So this is the November eighteenth meeting of the Committee to Review Town Council Rules and the Town Code. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Orangeville's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. This meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel eight or High Definition Channel ten seventy-two. It may be also accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video Amendment Archives on the Town of Orangeville's website as printed.
Counselors, Verdic, Clark,
Here.
Mutkey,
Here.
Tamish,
Here.
Turkelson,
Here.
You have Korm.
Thank you very much. And no public being recognized, we'll move on to review with the town attorney. Thank you very much, Karen.
So if you want, I'm just gonna go through it, and what I did was, I left what was the redline stuff is from before for the most part, but I tried to highlight whatever I put in that was new since the last meeting. So in the first paragraph, I think we had talked about making an amendment or repeal of these rules to reeds, so that's what I added in to that sentence. And going down to Rule two at the bottom of the, I'm working on the redline version. I added the word. I think I must have added the word town before the word boards. And I did that to distinguish from council committees, because you guys are the ones who are the town boards. So that's why and then I updated, and you'll see, you'll see. Do you wanna look online?
No, but you can just.
And then it says, C Rule eleven D, and you'll see, I made the changes to the A, B, C. I'm gonna do.
Does that make sense?
I think it's fine, I think it's fine. What I'm gonna do once we're done is, I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna clean it up, and then I'm gonna do a redline version against the original, because this shows like a million permutations, but I think for the council, they should see what's different in this document than the existing rules.
Can I ask, I have a question.
Yes.
It says, "The president of the town council shall reside at the meeting." What does preside mean?
It means run the meeting.
That's all it means? Is there something more to it in Masons that?
Well, I think they're the presiding officer, and then we do go into duties of the meeting.
Basically, that means running the meeting.
They're running the meeting, they're making decisions on points of order, they're.
Because it's not always the president, the presider is who it is.
It's typically the president, but if the president's not there.
It says, then the vice president, and the absent of both, and then it goes.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what preside meant.
And then you'll see, I added the words.
Do you have any other concerns, because I know you have things going on?
No, 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 I just, no, I'm ready to just go along.
And I did add the words for chair, because we, in the rules, we use the terms interchangeably. Whoever's chair in the meeting, whoever's the presiding officer, it's the same. The chair is the presiding officer, the presiding officer is the chair. So, okay, so that's what I did on page one, I just added the two reeds and town boards on page two. Yeah, that was just the.
Oh, is it on me? It occurred to me. I'm not so sure, we're gonna have the group, we might wanna keep that the redline needs this, the green line needs, or the blue line.
Well, no, that's what I was saying, is once, once you guys are happy with how it looks, then there's gonna be one, there's gonna be the original Town Council rules as they exist today, and then there's gonna be a version that shows redlines to that. It's not gonna be in my color.
No, that sounds much easier.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so on this page, I think the only thing I did was add for chair to presiding officer, just so that the references and everything all have to be. I'm looking at Rule four, maybe I'll reference the rule. If you look at Rule four. Sorry, that's why I didn't see it. Yeah, actually, I could, I could put presiding officer or chair. But actually, the presiding officer is the presidential, I think it actually makes sense where it is. To use it as a presiding officer or chair. Okay. So the next page, page.
And let's do Addison, because that the presiding officer is the chair.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at Rule four, the presiding officer shall take the chair at the hour, which I mean, I think that's essentially. So if you look at Rule, it's now five A, because we changed, we changed all that. So it's, on my version, it's the top of, it's page three. So I added. I forget what preposition is there. Except something, so I've made it except in emergencies. Added the language at the end, "The council president shall note the arrival of any council who joins the meeting late and shall note the departure of any council who leaves the meeting early." So that's not running out to the restroom, it's.
I just have one question about that. Do we, do we wanna say something about a town counselor letting the president know that they're leaving the meeting permanently? Because if somebody just slips out, and, I mean, I don't run the meeting, I don't know what it's like for you, you're dealing with a lot of things, and you know, it's like, I don't even know if you notice that people leave the meeting early.
I have, typically you do. The question is, if someone gets up
To go to the restroom.
To go to the restroom, but typically, if they're leaving permanently, they gather all the public stuff.
But I, that's a good point. I think they should announce it.
Probably practice.
I think it's.
Usually notify me as well if they're leaving early, or not going to be attending, or coming in late, and then I let leadership know that they're either arriving or leaving.
I just think if they're out of meeting, and you make a decision to leave the meeting, for whatever reason, you're like, have, you know, your. You get an emergency text or something, I think it's important that a council member state that they need to leave the meeting, and I think it also lets other people know that might not be like monitoring you know, because they're focused on resident input, or what, you know, leadership, or town manager or something.
So the responsibility is not on the counselor, not on the council leadership.
Right, it should be on the council, yeah.
Because you're, you're taking attention to who's speaking next, looking at the agenda.
You're paying attention to the person presenting items.
And then.
Now, can I just ask a short question? Counselor shall notify the council president, the end of council, ministry of the.
Which is what they, that's the practice they follow now?
They do, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the next two paragraphs, and the next paragraph is to incorporate, and I wanna just talk through how I approach this, because you may or may not disagree or agree, and we can adjust it.
You're on the paragraph two, the extent.
Yeah. Yeah, so, "To the extent permitted by state law, counselors may participate remotely in town council meetings in accordance with the town council's policy on remote participation. Then in effect, subject to any amendment or revocation of that policy as may occur, provided that any such amendment or revocation shall not require amendment of these rules." I just felt like, there's a lot of moving parts in the remote participation policy, and it might be nice to reference it in here the way Counselor Mutkey wanted, but not make it an actual part of the rules so that you don't need to do two reads, you don't have to reopen the rules if you wanna address that policy. I just thought it made more sense, and so, I, what I didn't do, but what I would do, is attach, make an attachment A at the end, attach the policy, which is what this says, "A copy shall be attached for informational purposes as attachment A, but such policy shall not be deemed to be an integral part of these rules, and such attachment shall be removed, updated, or replaced as appropriate." So I think it gives the council just a little more flexibility, but it still lets everyone know sort of what the state of play is.
I like that, I think that's a good compromise, yeah.
You'll, you'll see, I did the consent agenda differently. We'll see when we get to that.
I was just looking, I know I have a copy in, in the bag there, but in the policy it requires advanced notice, so for example, the other night, when the council wanted to come in unexpectedly in the middle of the meeting. We go ahead and jump in, use a booth, whatever, try to activate them in. It does say, you just notice.
Yeah, I have it. I think, and I, and I was thinking about that at the time, but the reason I didn't say anything is because the reason that council was joining late was, it was clearly a medical issue, that wasn't anticipated, so.
No, I think that's fine, that kind of falls within the emergency. I think, you know, that was his first opportunity, I know exactly what Karen's referring to.
And the other time it happened, we had advance notice that that person wanted, other times, so it seems like, it seems like it kind of has made sense, like, I don't see people.
What was your question? Well.
Here, if the, if the reason for remote participation is known, a counselor seeking to participate remotely must notify and seek permission from the town council president on or before the Thursday preceding the meeting date. Otherwise, a counselor should seek permission as soon as reasonably possible.
Okay.
So I think that's what we did. Yeah, I, I, to me, the circumstances were such that I should seem better.
Were you thinking some of that's my question?
No, I, I just was thinking that 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 covers it pretty well, that I hate to see that become somewhat of a well, I won't be at the meeting type of thing, but if something comes up that all of a sudden, I gotta jump in, because the vote's not going my way.
But can the town council president also say no to letting them into the meeting? Isn't that what it says, that we would need to let the president know?
Unless there's a very, unless there's a reason unknown, or there's an emergency.
I guess we're not supposed to be using our cell phones during meetings, though.
Right.
I mean, I guess we probably reach out to Cindy, or we reach out to Lynn if it was like.
Well, and I think the reference on using cell phones, that be included, was to talk to each other, which is not necessarily someone outside trying to say, hey, there's a problem, you know?
Yeah. I know what you're saying, I just.
I would hope, Craig, that that, what you're referring to is covered in a preamble. All right?
Yeah, I don't think.
And if it's not, then they have to live with themselves, I mean, I, I think that's dirty fool, but if people wanna play dirty fool, then, you know. Then, so, then we could go to the very end, and we could do the investigation.
Oh, gosh. I hope we never come to that.
You know, I did notice there was something, I know I'm skipping, but there was something in the paper recently where the town of, I think it was Stone, not Canton, it might be Canton, they're both having their issues with their lakes and, and all that. And they were, I think one of them was invoking the investigation procedure. But it seemed like, given what's going on, I mean, I think all those towns, like, it was at that magnitude. I didn't mention that, so I was like, oh, there you go.
It was a vehicle to address it.
Yes, same as ours. Yeah. And then there was something, wasn't it, there was something in, oh, in the city of Boston, that, maybe that's what I was thinking of. The city of Boston tried to do it with the post office to subpoena the post office, because knowing Boston's getting their mail delivered, and the post office attorney explained why they don't have to comply with that subpoena. But it was definitely pursuant to, I could have made up the Stone, I'm sorry, or that, but.
Yeah, I had put it out, the last meeting.
I almost got it, because I didn't, was that the city of Boston?
Yeah, and so it was literally their subpoena power pursuant to the same statute that we talked about, because we all have pretty much the same. So I thought that was interesting, I meant to mention that. So they may have made it, maybe they should be doing that.
I'm sure the post office attorney, that's what I talked about.
Well, I mean, I thought it was funny, because if you read the comments to the article, part of their rationale was, you know, the postmaster had to come in and, and meet with you, it would disrupt the actual performance of, of the work. And, and a post, a postman, or whoever it was, wrote in one of the comments, like, yeah, it really won't, we're the ones to live. So anyway, just a little aside there, but it was a good example of someone trying to use that statute. Okay, so, so back to this, so the remote participation. I think, you know, when, when we bring this to the council, and the policy's actually attached, so it's a good opportunity for everybody to read it again, and make sure they're familiar with how it works. But, you know, I think it does cover stuff fairly well. I have to figure out how to do it, because the actual policy then got amended, so I have to look up something. Then the next paragraph was meant to address if technical problems interrupt or prevent the presiding officer, the way up to five minutes. I then added, you know, after waiting five minutes, the meeting shall continue even if not resolved, but at the discretion of the presiding officer, the meeting may be delayed for an additional five minutes to allow for a further attempt. Or the meeting may resume, but the presiding officer may choose to skip certain agenda items while an attempt is made to resolve the problems. I think there should just be that additional flexibility, because you might need to wait longer, you might even need to wait even longer if there's a forum issue as a result. And there might be a particular agenda item where the counselor is their district, it's something that they really should be present for. So, that's what.
Because I don't already have the power to rearrange things like that?
They do, they do, but I thought it might be good to just reinforce that, you know, they can try to make things work essentially.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Without stopping the meeting entirely. So, does that?
I like this level of detail, because this is a new policy, and I think as we work our way through it, things will come up, so I think you've got a good amount here, and then as, as things arise, you can work through it, I like it.
I mean, the, the other thing I could change is delay for an additional five minutes, I could say, delay for an additional reasonable period at the discretion of the presiding officer.
I think that's better than, you know, I think an additional reasonable period.
And that means somebody's gotta watch the clock.
Well, reasonable period means someone doesn't.
No, it means you don't have to watch.
Right, I'm just saying, if he's a parent, somebody has to say, oh, no, they're at four and a half.
Yeah, so this way, it's sort of like, oh, we need six minutes, and then everything's gonna work great, let's do that. Okay, so. I don't think I changed anything. Well, it's now five C.
What page are you on?
It's page six.
The new five C?
Yeah, the numbers, everything got pushed up a little bit. So, let me see. "So for regular meeting calls on a solemn or legal holiday, the president shall make every effort to reschedule such meeting to another Thursday, so not Thursday the following week, but another Thursday, but may choose another day if necessary and warranted by circumstances. In addition, regular meetings are rescheduled by the president if necessary and warranted by circumstances, for example, a lack of form on the scheduled meeting day, such as an example. And every effort shall be made to reschedule any such meeting to another Thursday, but another date may be chosen if necessary and warranted by circumstances." Cindy?
You know, setting up the calendar, pretty quick, we should try.
Well, I think we always do, I mean, just coming up with this. Well, the December dates is scheduled to change, and we're contemplating the January change.
The twenty-third, that's the.
So I guess the question is, does this do what you think it needs to do, or are there?
Yeah, I think it does.
Okay, so you're saying it's not gonna be the second, that's what I was talking about.
Well, it's still.
No, it's not the second.
Oh, yeah, I missed it last year. I was in Dallas. Oh, I'm training.
Do we even wanna take up a two-minute break?
Maybe so.
We don't want you to miss out.
We're talking about the section of the calendar. We were just, we were talking about, obviously, the first and the third, but then we've, we've changed a lot of them.
Right, that's gone through, I mean, I don't change them on my own, it goes through leadership. Because it initiates, it initiates by a counselor saying, I'm not gonna be in whatever, you know, realm, I'm not gonna be around, can you reschedule? And then I usually get an email from Craig, or whoever's leadership at the time, to say, you know, can we change the meeting? So I just follow their direction.
So Cindy, we're, we're looking at the ninth for our council meeting in January, is that true? Not the second? The second is a day after the holiday.
Yeah, no, it's not the second. It's the ninth and the twenty-third.
The twenty-third is kind of an issue with the F and A, but.
I think we're gonna be a lot of the committee.
Well, it's in the wording of the other dates, because that's what we're talking about. But it's these next two months, we are, we're inserting the dates.
Well, I know, but we don't wanna switch the rules just because we're switching.
No, I'm just saying.
I think the rules are fun, but, I mean, but separately, we do, because I think there's also in play the February school vacation. That's another.
No, I think it addresses what looks like.
I think it looks fun. February and April is, is the two school vacation weeks, yeah.
And we've changed them before, because of.
And, and in here, didn't we talk about when, wasn't there a line in here about when we would determine the calendar for the next year? Or did we take that out?
That's a mistake.
It's typically done, the second meeting in December, to set it for the following year.
But, yeah, it's, is that?
The rule of the town council calendars.
Didn't we talk about that?
Is it in here?
Because, I mean, really, that, that rule, that sets up the calendar.
Yeah, the time and place of regular meetings shall be published in December of each year, for the following calendar year, in accordance with the ordinance governing council meetings.
Right.
So that is in Rule five A, but the top of five A.
And at the same, I thought we should be committed to the meeting schedule sooner, but here we are in October and November, looking to change something two months from that. So I can feel we're gonna just get that fixed.
I'm just wondering if, does it make sense to have, I don't wanna be remembering things again, but does it make sense to have the regular meeting schedule fall more behind the section time and place of meetings? Because it's kind of disjointed.
Yeah, it does, actually.
It's almost like they're kind of, it's.
Yeah, because I lost track of that, yeah, I think they should go together. Can we move that?
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? Just swap five B.
Yeah.
Yeah, five B and five C swap.
Of course, it's five B, it's five.
Well, but B is still talking about meetings.
But the meeting hall section is. The whole thing about regular meeting schedule, you know, when we're thinking about, how does this business run? Where's the time and place, how can you attend? When do we set the schedule? And then we have meeting requirements, it just seems disjointed to have.
Well, maybe we need to.
It could, five C just become five.
Five A should be get rid of attendance and remote participation, move that down, just time and place of meetings. Five A would be the paragraph that's under five A, the first one, and then pull up five C.
Well, we wouldn't get rid of it ten minutes, because that's, that's.
No, we're not gonna get rid of it, but we're gonna separate it after.
So you want a five A I and a five A I I?
No, no.
No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm not advocating for that.
All right, just so I'm clear, Betty, walk me through what you're saying.
Okay, five A, if we leave the title of five A, time and place of meetings, stop. We leave the first paragraph, which is that one sentence, and then we pull up in its entirety five C as the second paragraph. Then we've got that all together. And then five B can be attendance, remote participation.
I don't like it that way, I'll tell you why. Because we need to let people know the time and place of the meetings, and how we can become part of those meetings, that's this paragraph, time and place of attendance. But then we need to let people know, how do we figure out when those meetings are? I think that five C as its own thing is okay, I just think it should be before the meeting requirements. Yeah, just make five B, five C, make five C, five B. Only because it's just like, it's a thread of consciousness, you know, it's like.
So move five, five C has to be five B, and then move five G to be five C.
They're, they're almost, if you look at five Ds.
Well, five B is really saying part of what five C says. It really does.
Why don't I go back, I will look at all of five, and I will rearrange it. Yeah, maybe you guys can take one last look at it.
Yeah, or maybe it's meeting requirements and meeting schedule, and it just becomes one thing, Craig, is that what you're saying?
Well, not necessarily just one thing, but I, if you look at five B.
Yeah.
There is, there's a lot of duplication with five C.
I kinda like five C, though. Because I think it, I think it really notifies us, I think it really notifies us as to how a meeting could change, that it's super clear, guess what, meetings will change, and these are the circumstances of which a meeting will change, so I, I wouldn't wanna get rid of five C, even if it's.
You could make five C, five A, and incorporate that very first sentence that's in there now.
That's what I like, yeah.
Oh, that is, that is, yeah, that was what Betty had said, which would make it make sense.
Yeah.
How about, I will make some executive.
We all agree it needs a little buffing and waxing.
We'll clean it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, when you look at the, this.
Well, because we're adding stuff, and then there was stuff that was already there, and, you know.
You look at clean pockets of, without adding.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure that's true. But I think, I think the next, hopefully, the next version that you all see will essentially be what we think is final.
I think we're there, yeah. I hope so, it's the nice clean.
Okay, so, we just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just clear out. Okay, then, so that's, I think we're, well, five F, so five F is new, that's the consent agenda. I did not do what I did with the remote participation, I incorporated it right into the rules, and the reason for that is I don't think it's really gonna change, I think it's very straightforward. Any counselor has the ability at any time to pull anything out of the consent agenda, so I don't think there's anything controversial, or yeah, I, I just don't, to me, this is as straightforward as you can be, so it made more sense to me to actually make it part of the rules, because I don't really.
I like it in the rules, I like it a lot, yeah, I think it needs to be there.
I do, too. I don't know if I did any. Which one, Rule six F. Request to committee and sixteen in consideration. So six F. Okay, so the first sentence deals with that. And the second sentence, I was making clear that reference was standing committee. It's essentially, they both essentially say, you refer, the only thing that I think is worth thinking about is the first one, when you're referring it to an ad hoc committee, such matter upon motion and majority vote of the council be referred to such committee. Then the next sentence, any matter may be referred to a standing committee, because that was, really didn't make sense to have a sentence in there with appropriate jurisdiction for advice sought by the council, but it doesn't have anything in there as to the process, the way the first sentence does. The first sentence says you need a motion and a vote. I kind of feel like it should say the same thing, because I don't know how the council is going to refer something to a committee, regardless of which kind of committee it is, so I'm going to just say repeat the vote language.
Well, it says refer to a standing committee, commission, or board.
Yeah. What I added to words with appropriate jurisdiction.
Can you think of an example where that's happened?
What's a standing, I thought we only had two standing committees.
No, I meant standing committees of the town.
Oh, then I'm confused.
Maybe I need to make that.
We need to clarify that.
We're going to put three of those.
I mean, conservation commission is a commission, not a committee.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's, because earlier in this, we had very sharp distinction between these standing committees, which are only two.
Versus our public committees.
So what's the difference?
Well, and actually, and that's a good point, because the way it read initially, the word standing wasn't there, the word, the words appropriate jurisdiction wasn't there. So I don't know if that is, because it says referral to committee, so maybe it's, it's only committees of the council.
When would we refer, when would we ban that, like, we're going to refer this to the Main Street Historic District Committee, I mean, they're regulatory. Would we at the council do that? I don't, I find this odd, I.
That's what I'm saying, is there any example that we know of?
Why would we do this? Plating board, I don't know.
Well, then maybe we change this to basically say, we change the first sentence to say, an existing or new ad hoc committee or standing committee of the council.
There you go, that's what we need for this, because I don't see us.
With the standing committees, there's just like two of them.
Right, but, you know, whatever there is, there is.
I mean, we're up to a committee.
And then you don't, and then you don't need this last sentence at all, because it says, you know, it relates to a subject which may properly be examined and reported on by whatever committee it is. And then, upon motion and majority vote, the council be referred.
Well, this goes back to the oddness of our town. And that's what we are, no, no, that's what we learned when we went up to Fort Devens. That most towns have standing committees, that counselors are members of, that kind of serve like our comprehensive financial advisory committee does. That they are, counselors are on those, and they, they look at things and then they bring that recommendation forward, kind of like we have, we're going to have these reports. So we're odd, we are odd, that we only have these two standing committees, so I think that's within.
We have to be very clear.
But the question is, is, like, an example would be, the resident in my precinct who would like PFAS to be more in the public's eye, and he wants the council to do something for PFAS. So I don't, I don't think that's our role, and his comment was, well, you know, the Board of Health could do more, but the council needs to push that down, so would that be an instance, I'm just making this up, where a resident comes and there's twenty residents and they all say PFAS needs to be more of a concern, and our Board of Health is at worry, and they could do more, but and we could say, we would like to refer the potential PFAS issue to the, to the Board of Health. I mean, that way, I'm asking, because I don't really know.
Would it be appropriate to?
You know, would that be an appropriate place where we might be able to say, we think there's a committee that's better served than the thirteen of us that don't really, we don't, other than saying we want you to worry about PFAS, if we actually had a mechanism that it would bring it to the people and it could be the Board of Health.
I think we have a mechanism, that we have a liaison, and I would say, like, are you a liaison to health, or health? I'd say council, I would expect you to say council, can you bring this to your.
But I don't know that a, that a liaison to the council has the ability to go to the Board of Health and say, you know, we'd like you to step up your game on PFAS.
As I say, there are concerns that were brought before the council, and you address this, please.
And that's true, what the liaison is supposed to be doing is having information conduit.
But the Board of Health has four corners of their, their regulatory.
They're not the best example.
No, it's a good example, it's a real life example.
But all the regulatory committees, licensing board, conservation.
Maybe they have specific.
Yeah, they have authority that we don't give them.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, is that maybe we would want to refer certain topics to a committee who's better able to make use of the citizens' engagement, or what we think as a council, and if I say, you know, I think I, we have these twenty residents and they're concerned about PFAS, what do we think about referring this to the Board of Health so that we could take that up as an issue? We're going to refer it to the committee? I don't know, I'm making that up.
Well, what are those committees called? Are they called the standing committees of the town? Is that what they're called?
Well, I guess, they are the standing committees of the town.
You could say ad hoc, any committee or commission, really.
You could do both, so you could, you could add or standing committee to the first sentence, so we're talking in that sentence about a new ad hoc committee or standing committee of the council. And then, if you wanted to leave that last sentence in there, I would say a standing committee commissioner, standing committee commissioner board of the town with appropriate, and I would put the words with appropriate jurisdiction for advice sought by the town council.
Because it says right here on the website.
And then add the same vote again.
Principal boards and committees. Even though we have committees, we have some.
It's in the town code, it's a standing committee of the town.
Yeah, we have commissions, committees, and boards.
So, beautiful, that, the first sentence, when matter coupled before the council relates to subjects may be properly examined and reported upon by an existing or new ad hoc committee of the council. Such matters shall upon motion and majority vote of the council be referred to such committee. Is that, could we just say that be referred to a standing committee, commission, or board with appropriate jurisdiction for advice sought by the town council?
Well, again, I think the first sentence is talking about committees of the council, although just ad hoc committees, so if you wanted to keep all of this, I would say, the first sentence, I would say, by an existing or new ad hoc committee or standing committee of the council, such matter shall upon motion and majority of the vote of the council be referred to such committee. And then the second sentence, I would say, any matter may be referred to a standing committee commissioner board of the town with appropriate jurisdiction for advice sought by the town council upon motion and majority vote of the council.
Okay, yeah, that, all right, okay.
I see the distinction, I will look at the distinction.
And I think it's slightly different. Because the first one, you're, you're basically asking the ad hoc committee to incorporate whatever it is into their charge, I think. And then the second is, it's a little for advice sought by the council, so I think the board of committee would have to figure out what they really can appropriately do.
Or say there were ten people that came to speak about a complaint regarding the shellfish regulations. Then I would expect you to say, you know, council, who's the liaison to the shellfish committee, can you please convey this to the, you know, have them work it out there before it becomes, uh, it used to be a very light discussion on the council level. So I think that's one of the reasons why the shellfish committee was created, to keep all that mix-it-up stuff, you know? Amongst, amongst the people who cared about it and not really.
And who have the expertise to be.
Yeah, and not necessarily bulk up the council. I do have a note under reconsideration under the next six F. In my notes from the last time we met, you have, at any, at any meeting at which a vote has been taken, shall be an ordinary council who has voted with the prevailing side to move for immediate reconsideration.
Yeah, so I was going to get to that one, so the way it works now is, is is you make a motion, there's a vote at a meeting, and then if you voted with the prevailing side, you either say, you know what, I want to make a motion for reconsideration, or you say, at that meeting, I'm going to make a motion for reconsideration at the next meeting. That's the way it works under the way the rule is currently written. So we had talked last time about saying, you can do that, or you can simply make a motion for reconsideration at the next meeting without having given that advance notice. Because a lot of times, you don't know.
You don't know, I think that's fair.
My only concern, and this is what I was trying to address here, is if someone says, you know what, I'm going to make a motion for reconsideration at the next meeting, and we put it on the agenda, motion, we've done that recently, motion for reconsideration, then I'm fine with the vote taking place, not just the motion, but the actual revote. But if we don't have anything on the agenda and no one has given notice at the previous meeting, nobody in the public knows that's going to happen. And so that's what I was trying to address here, is if you haven't given that notice, which doesn't, I've never seen anyone do it since I've been here, but you know, I understand the reasoning, you haven't given that notice, and you haven't put anything on the agenda, and then at the next meeting, you say, I want to make a motion for reconsideration, I think you could make that motion, but then and, and technically what's supposed to happen is then you're immediately supposed to take a revote, so maybe what you do is you give notice at the next meeting that you're going to make that motion at the following meeting, so there'd be a skip of a meeting, but then everyone would be unnoticed that this is happening. Because that's, that's what I was trying to address in here, is the lack of notice to the public if you do it that way.
But if, if, but if at a meeting, somebody moves for a new reconsideration, or prior to the next meeting, they move for reconsideration and it gets put upon the agenda, then we could vote for a vote.
You just lost your form.
What I was just saying, Chris.
You lost form, Chris, you can't.
All right, you're back, we're back.
The reconsideration, when we talk about the vote, so if I made a motion for, or announced that I was going to reconsider the question at that meeting, or prior to the next meeting, insufficient time for it to be placed on the agenda, then it could be a vote.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any issue with that.
It's just that if there's no notice.
If there's nothing on the agenda, then you show up at the next meeting, and you say, I want a motion for reconsideration. No, no one knows it's going to happen. So, so let me see, in addition to the voting, may make a motion for reconsideration at the next regular meeting. Maybe I'll just say, provided that such motion was noticed on the agenda, provided that such notice, reconsideration was noticed on that meeting's agenda. And then I'll just say, you know, if the motion, I'll add something, but basically, if the motion was not noticed, then you can give notice at that meeting. And give notice at that meeting. For reconsideration at the next meeting. I think that works, that gives more flexibility than what we have now without having to suspend rules, but it still doesn't surprise anybody in the audience. That, I think, right, no, that's a lot. Page twelve, okay, I just added. I just added, of the, of the council, that places a new eleven, that's, you know, eleven A, committees of the council. That's what the heading is, so I think it's understood, but I thought it would be clearer, just to make it clear that that's what we're talking about, committees of the council.
Rule eleven.
Rule eleven A.
There's a line in the current form, that says, all standing and ad hoc committees of the council shall be advised to the town council and shall take no action but by the council. I don't think it addresses the regulatory committees. I'm sorry, that's the old rule eleven. They're not advisory to the council.
These are committees of the council. Not the standing committees of the town, the regulatory committees that you're talking about are standing committees.
Yeah, so we have standing committees that are the conservation commission, the licensing board, they have their own.
They're not committees of the council, they're committees of the town.
Correct.
How confusing, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, I'm sorry, yep, you're right, yep, I'm turning my head on.
So the committees that are purely advisory to the council are committees of the council.
Right, okay. Maybe we need to. Because I.
It's confusing. And I, maybe we just kind of have that confusion.
Yeah, yeah, I know we did, and I just.
No, I know, I'm just saying, that's how confusing it is.
And I was aware of that, yeah.
And it's actually weird, because it's a further conflict, I'd have to see what, what we actually say, but the appointments committee is a standing committee of the council, but it's in the code.
I'm still grappling with the, the terms I might add. I couldn't express it just simply.
So the appointments committee, it's referred to as the council serving on the appointment standing committee. It's not really a committee of the council, though. I mean, it's in the town code. Oh, it starts off, it starts off, there shall be a standing appointments committee of the town council, which shall consist of five members, at least three out of the five should be town councillors. Personally, I think five out of the five.
And you don't say that, we got to.
And we can get to that when we get to the code stuff, but yeah, so it is referred to in the code as the appointment standing committee of the town council. And I guess that makes sense, because it's, it's, it's formed purely to revise the council on its appointments, I mean, that's its role. But it's a little confusing as it's in the code. So, yeah, so this paragraph, I wasn't changing anything, because you know, the heading was council committees, I, I changed it to committees of the council, just to kind of keep the wording consistent, and then I just added of the council in that second paragraph, just to reinforce that's what we're talking about. Yeah, it's also in the charter, too.
Two dash four.
Well, it doesn't reference, two dash four doesn't reference. Two dash four just says, unless provided otherwise by the charter, or until provided otherwise, whatever. The town council shall appoint all boards, commissions, and committees, the town council shall adopt procedures to allow for ordinary appointment of the member parties. Oh, no, oh, actually, I do want to, okay, so go, so to rule twelve, and I want to tell you why I made this change. So, rule twelve, it's just appointments required two weeks, that's not a change, I was just reinforcing where it appears elsewhere, so that's consistent. But what I did change was, you go to your when you go to rule fifteen, so the way it read before I changed it was individual petitions are, get one read, the group petitions get two reads. And I changed it, free petitions isn't this norm anymore, because they're both under the heading of free petition, so that's, that should be changed regardless. If you look at the charter. But I moved group petitions to one read, and that's because at the last meeting, a counselor said to me, you know, there was the vote to refer the petition to a public hearing, and that counselor said, well, I actually voted no. What happens if we vote no? And I said, well, the charter actually requires that the council hold a public hearing on the group petition, so I think that would be problematic if you didn't actually do that. But he said, and I think there's some merit to it, but he said, well, my vote should matter, I should be able to vote yes or no, so why can't I vote no? And, and I, and I take his point, because I do find. And, and I, and I take his point, because I do find there are. Limited circumstances where you almost have to take a certain vote, and that's not really the essence of voting. Um, so I felt like, if we made the group petition one read, meaning it's the public hearing. So we're not asking you to refer to a public hearing, we're just saying the charter requires, we're gonna have a public hearing. The charter requires that it be advertised, so, you know, we still have to do that, it's not like it's gonna come as a big surprise. But I think, it did make sense to me when I thought about it after the meeting. Well, why don't we, cause it's only in the rules that says it's two reads, it's not in the charter. Why refer, you know, cause I think, I think we made it two reads because we typically refer things to a public hearing. But, I think if every councillor voted no, not to refer it. It would be problematic, because the charter says you, you shall hold a public hearing. So that's why I did that, um, for your consideration.
Yeah, it's interesting, because I looked at all of the other twelve or so town councils setups. To look at their petition situations, there's only one other, one other one that was similar to ours, almost every other one of them. Was kind of like, basically, if the petition is, I'm certified, you'll have the public hearing and you will. You will put it on the agenda and deal with it, I mean, there wasn't any, it, it wasn't, it sounded more forceful. Than what our charter has, so I think that cleaning that up like this.
Oh, you mean talking about other towns?
Yeah, yeah, so I think it, it, it sounded almost like, whether you like it or not, you're gonna do this.
You're gonna hold a public hearing.
Like on some model.
Think that's what the charter's telling you to do, and you shouldn't be able to say, no, let's not have a public hearing, but I take his point. It's like you're asking me to be able to refer, why can't I say yes or no?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think this is more coming that way.
It's right after the meetings, I go home, I'm like, oh. Um, yeah, so I thought that, that made sense, and also I don't really like using the word free petition, because free petition is the heading. And it's individual and group petition, so that's not the right divide.
I hear you, but I, I'm still thinking that if the charter says that we have to hear it, that. I think it's a, it's something we should go on. I think that the charter.
But that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying by taking it out of two reads. Cause two reads forces you to take the vote at the first read, to refer. So I think if you make it one read, where what we have on the agenda is the public hearing, you're required by the charter, and not. Act like it's a choice. Thank you. And it would still be advertised, so, you know, it would have any job. Yeah, I've just never seen anything on an agenda where you move it from first read to second without an actual vote. You know, cause I was thinking, well, is there a way to just do two reads for the process, but I've never seen that. You know, you guys move it to the second. Or the hearing.
Yeah.
So. So that's it.
Addition of this.
Um, well, that was there from the last one, I think.
True, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I try, I, because there's so much redlining, I tried to like highlight stuff that I was doing. Cause I did start to do something in here and it was, it was redlined, I'm like, no one's gonna know, Chris.
Right, right.
I, I have, one thing I've been, some people just talk about. Is that, uh, we have. A local, a, a discussion with you and, and other people. About, uh, being able to retrieve information and request to, uh, open the. Information, to people's private thoughts.
Of the public records.
Is it worth putting a rule in there, that it's something to the effect of upon. Action, that each councillor shall be assigned a town email address and. Providing how, all, to ask. Uh, and shall be able to contact at all times. Because there's, there's still some councillors that do not.
They didn't transition.
They haven't transitioned, and to me, that's a major.
That's a good point.
Then you should do it, period.
Well, what's, I mean, it kinda comes down to the same conversation we keep having. If you say that something happens, what is the end result of if you're not in compliance with that? And so I think you would wanna, you know, if we're gonna have a rule that it's a requirement to be on the system, there should be some kind of. Um, mechanism, if you're not on, then you're, you're not allowed to engage in town business, you can't come to meetings, I don't really know, but.
Well, you can't, you can't do that unless you're all elected and nobody can enforce that, um.
No, that's the question, what would be?
I think the practical effect would be, um, well, I think. If someone were suing about a public records request. Then I think, but I'm just trying to think what the liability would be in terms of a councillor. I don't know that there would be personal liability. I'm just, I'm just trying to think in terms of, it's not a good look with the secretary state's office, I mean, because it's, you know. Well, we couldn't access all this stuff because the councillor didn't use the town email, no. Did you provide town email? Yes, we even have a rule that they use it. Um, but I'm just not sure I'd have to look into as a legal matter what, what that might mean. You know, I think, Kristen, you might have sent to me. You know, I think other towns, when people aren't, like, elected officials aren't following rules, they can look into. Kind of taking away committee chairmanships, or, you know, you can take away things like that. You can't say you can't come to meetings and you can't vote, cause you can, you know, you're elected and you can. Yeah, no, they're councillors, you can't make them not be a councillor. So, yeah.
Could you, could you say that all communications will be made through their town email address, for example?
But isn't it, i- isn't it the two councillors that are gonna suffer them? Or the three councillors that currently aren't using the town email, because. To me, if there's a public record request. And I've got a email that I'm not using this town, the public is now gonna see all my personal.
Yes and no, yes and no, yes and no, because that's true. If, if the councillor comes in and produces their phone and we go through it, it's not true the minute they leave office. And we get a request for that same town record, and we have gotten them. And now, we have no ability to access their phone, because they're not an elected official, and they, you know, they very well may say, no, I don't wanna do it.
Well, and the other issue is.
Their town email, we have them in the server.
Be very selective in what email space, why do you do it with the private phone?
Well, if they're doing, if they're doing their own search.
Right, they're on the others.
Right.
Our, our IT's not gonna be doing, search through their personal email.
Right, I couldn't do, they would tell you how to do the search, and they're not gonna do it, so you would do your own search. And then, either you do it well, or you don't do it well, or you produce everything, or you don't, I mean, no one knows.
Do you have a, a clause in there, a phrase? Muckus wording, that all communications with council shall be via the, from the town or from.
I think you've got a good point.
Shall be through the town email.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly put it in here, and I think there's value to publicly stating here is what the expectation is. Um, so I don't have any issue with that. I do think you're gonna have an enforcement issue as a practical matter, but that, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't say it.
And instead of stripping them of liaison assignments, I think we should give them extra.
I was gonna say, that might help them, not.
Yeah, so, um.
And they have to take minutes too.
Work wild, you could have it.
I, I do too, and I think it's really.
That's been thinking.
It's what you should do, um, you know, in terms of how government operates, so, you know, if you're acting as a councillor, you're speaking as a councillor. Your records are on the records, unless there's an exemption.
And this is new to us, cause only in July did we receive our, you know, our new email address, did this ever become a thing.
One of the things I did send, um, from the other rules that when I was reading is on. I'm just going through, cause I can't remember which one it's on, too, so there was.
No, I haven't.
Sanctions for violations of rules, council made by no majority vote, approve a motion to sanction any member after being given a warning by the presiding officer. Again, violates the rules of the council, or the same charter sanctions that constantly include, including reprimands, sanction, loss of a committee chair membership. Um, I mean, there is just a section in here about it.
Yeah, now keep in mind, um, because it's now considered a complaint against a town official or employee. They have in here all the language, you'd have to go into executive session to do it. Um, you know, which is fine, it's just. Now, if there's a complaint against, let's say there's a complaint against you, Kristen, and, and we say, okay, we're gonna go, you know. We're gonna give you the proper notice under the open meeting law that there's a complaint against you. The way it works is, you have the right to have that whole discussion taken place in executive session. You can say, no, I want it all to be in public, and then you do it all on the other. So it's the person who the complaint is about gets to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I kinda looked at, to the new laws too. Yeah, it's tricky, it's tricky when you're elected. This is really not a whole lot, you know. At the end of the day, it's, people vote you in or they vote you out.
Well, I mean, I, I think that. It's kind of, it's kind of written here for us, if we wanted to include. Disactions for violations of rules.
I mean, every town councillor was assigned a town email, it's just whether or not they use it. Again, there's three that aren't, there's three that aren't utilizing them.
But I think that's probably not, not good for us.
But I also know that, because it transitions during the election year, that some of the constituents. Are not aware to find me at my new email address, because they've done it before, and I'm in their address book.
Yeah, but that's different than choosing to not, to not transition at all.
It's a very simple way of, you know.
CC user.
You put it, uh, out of blacklist, like a new blacklist. So, you'll get a message saying, I no longer use it this email address, please send all food, supplies to chris dot.
I know why your son is in that discussion.
The only problem with that is if you actually are still using that email address, but only now it's your personal. Because then you wouldn't want that to go to everybody who uses it.
I can only tell you that the three that aren't currently using it, it's because their constituents. Are so used to using the old one, and I've asked these councillors to forward that old to their new town. So at least a record, cause they all bought separate phones and set up a Gmail. It's not their private home, it's phones that they purchased and has their Gmail account on there, and I told them, well, then if you don't wanna use the town phone. Then you've gotta connect your Gmail to your town, so that when someone sends you a Gmail, it automatically goes to the town.
Yeah, they should, they should just be using them.
They can use their private phones to set up a town email.
Right.
That's not, it doesn't have your town phone, they have town email.
Right, you just need to use the Gmail.
It's helpful.
Right, well, I'm trying to explain that, um, well.
Actually, I have precinct eleven Clark for my formerly council email address, while I was campaigning. So you can't use the town email address while you're campaigning, but I use it for my newsletter, because there are one.
And you shouldn't, and you shouldn't be using your town phone for your campaign. Right, not sending your address.
But I'm just saying that, I, I've kept a Gmail account because I can't send newsletters, there's, it's, um.
Not town, town council sponsor.
Yeah.
Right, right, the election activity has to be completely separate from the town.
Newsletter news, and it's also a, um, um. The number of, um, of people receiving it, there's a cap under the town's, um. Policy for our, our phones, whereas.
You can't send an email six hundred.
Yeah.
Along that sort of thing.
So I'm saying that, that I can't retire that Gmail account, cause I'm utilizing it in a different way.
But I don't think any of us are advocating retiring Gmail, I'm just thinking, there's town business. That we've asked to have this level, um, um.
Sure.
Of respect for the role that we're in by giving town emails, and I think it opens us up to liability if we're. Not using that system as set up. And, you can still have your separate email, but if somebody emails you on your town email, and they're emailing you to complain about something. Um, like, we're hoping that they're sending it forward to their other email, but if they haven't set up their email. I don't know why the, I just, you know, I just have a hard time understanding.
Okay, maybe you add a message at the top, you know, if you were emailing about town business, please use the following address. This account is not used for that purpose, and then the person would have to send it again. Yeah, when you guys were first transitioning, I would get stuff from all kinds of accounts, and if it looked, if I could see that it wasn't the town account, I would copy the town account. And work that. So, what are your thoughts, and about this language?
The, we're talking about the sanction language?
The sanction language, I'll add the language of that, but it's funny, you know.
I, I, I think there should be something, uh.
I think if it's not in there, we don't have the ability, should leadership. Want to do that, and it would be like pulling it out of thin air versus having it in there and never needing to use it, you know?
I agree.
You know, I feel like, it's, it's clearly stated, we have a, we have a option here. Should we need it, let's hope we don't need it, and hopefully by having something, it also lets people know that there is, um. You know, there are consequences for our behavior of not adhering to the rules, because if not, the rules. We keep saying, how, you don't have an enforcement mechanism on some level, it's all just.
Yeah, I.
Well, it's not all just, I mean, you are all adults, you, you, presumably, you're all coming to this with the right intentions.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a problem, because I, you may be correct, for you knowing that I would change, I would not say you were, you were the chair of the official.
You wouldn't say?
I think. Seacious, but yeah, or you may be given. No, but I, I don't think you should say that word, but maybe something to recommend, recommend the sanction. Now, let me ask you this, Karen, is that public information if they're given a recommendation?
I would think it would have to be in public, because what would be the point of that? The team of you sit in a room and go, you're reprimanded.
Well, the hearing, the, the hearing may be private in the executive session, but it results in that. And then, that's not considered a personnel action that is.
No, I mean, I think, I think the whole point of this, we, we're going to discuss. We're accusing you of something, right, we're saying, we think you didn't follow a rule. We're gonna have this discussion in executive session, you're gonna have the opportunity to tell us why we're wrong, or why there are extenuating circumstances. And why you shouldn't be reprimanded, um, I presumably, I haven't, you know, obviously seen this in action here.
No, we're gonna see the investigations.
No, no, and then, you know, at the, at the end of the executive session, I would think they would be. I would think there would either be a vote, which then gets announced in public session, or you go back into public and take a vote. Um, but, I think if you're not publicly reprimanding a councillor, I don't see why.
Oh, I agree.
Why you would bother.
I agree. My question about legally, can you, I mean, like, you hear all the time, you know, unless it's a personnel matter, then I. Go discuss it.
Right.
Account employee, right, as opposed to a faculty official.
Right, um, well, you're not employees of the town, number one.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But, I just, I think. The nature of the violation is a violation of town council rules, so I don't think there's an inherent privacy right. That very often does attach to personnel actions of the town involving its employees. Um, there's, there's very often a, a privacy interest. And, and the person's privacy interest usually typically, not in the police case, but everybody else outweighs the public's right to know. Um, but here, you're a public official, and you're, you're not, it's not a reprimand or something personal or private to you. But here, you're a public official, and you're, you're not, it's not a reprimand or something personal or private to you. It's, it's a failure to comply with the very public town council rules, so I, I don't see a privacy right for that.
I think that, if, as Chris has said, I mean, you have all the rules, and you're gonna decide not to follow them.
I mean, when I was reading this, I was surprised that it didn't say may and how's include a public reprem, reprimand or sanction. And I will take a look at some of the other town councils to see what they say, but I, if you're not gonna do it in public, then, then I think you might as well save it at some time.
Right, you could have an executive session, but I think then it's too issued in public. Reprimand or sanction.
Right, and the due process is, is the executive session discussion.
I think that's good to know, I think. We don't know other leverage, other than just, I don't think the last two sentences make much sense. I think we have to review that.
So is it saying to, it should be done in executive session, and then it's saying, but if the council chooses? No, it's not, um, chooses to consider such action in open session. Well, because it start, it starts off by saying the council may by a majority vote, okay, approve a margin of sanction, all proceedings shall be conducted in executive session. Yeah, you're right, if the council chooses to consider, we'll see that action we're going to. The action may be the actual discipline as opposed to all proceedings and actions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this could be greatly better, um. Because then it goes on to say, or if the subject member exercises for her right under open meeting law to require that the action be considered in open session. The subject member may speak on his own phone behalf and then get counsel or whatever. But even if it was in an executive session, they could do that, so, you know. Yeah, it's definitely not working, council.
Yeah.
I think what they're saying is you have these rights, if you're gonna reject, if you're gonna deal with an open session, you're gonna, because a lot doesn't cover that. I don't think it speaks to that, um, they're saying you could have that same right, and then, you know, your council is there to advise you, they're not there to actually participate in the proceeding, which is typical. Yeah, let me look for some other language, um. I think thousands are, if the council chooses to consider some such action.
Yeah.
That's contradictory. I mean, I guess, I guess what they're saying, maybe the, the fact that they didn't use the word public is you could do a private reprimand, and then if it continues, maybe you come back and do a public reprimand. Maybe here you say, look, this can't continue, you know, we're not following our rules. Get with the program, you know, we're issuing you a private reprimand.
I can elect that option.
So maybe, you know, it doesn't.
That's kind of the argument of a lot of.
But I think what it can do is escalate, you know.
Well, the more bother is great, you're, you're not going to the nuclear option first, you're saying, you know, you're saying, look, this is a problem for the council and for the town business to be conducted properly, if, you know, if they're talking about that particular thing, stop doing that. You know, you're gonna issue a private reprimand, and hopefully this matters most.
No, I think you should, I, I would advocate to leave in the removal from a committee chair or whatever, because that might be the nuclear option, is like, again, it's an escalation that you need, and I think it's probably silly to think that we would ever need it, but again, I think it's like, you can't pull things out of thin air if they're not, if they don't exist. They're there, I mean, I don't have children, but I'm sure it's like raising children. You kind of always have a level of tricks in your bag that they kind of know about, you know, just pull it out of thin air.
Well, you don't, nuclear option.
But, you know, I mean, I just think it would be.
You don't believe in them because I said so? I think that was clear.
But I know that one. I mean, I just think it would be, again, like, it's just an option to have, in case you should need it, and probably the rule will never need it. Well, because I think, you know, the cancers, we're all adults, and we got elected, so I think probably people follow the rules for the most part, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, but yeah, it's just there in case.
If they give a private warning, or a private, um, discussion, and then just say, it's built into our rules that if there's no compliance after eight months or something, two months or whatever, then you'll make it public. That's what we're calling it. But that sounds kind of like a, a.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, you're not gonna go to this as a first step to begin.
No, but I think that if you lay it out that there's a.
For example, the email thing.
Kristen, when you were looking at the other towns, did you happen to notice, like, did most of them have something like this, did only a few of them have?
You know, I'm just curious.
I'm looking through all of them, I don't know.
I was just saying, I, I think what happened was I would, something would be a lot different than the other ones I read, and that might have been different than the ones I read. Yeah, or else I probably read it in three places, and when I was going back through all of them, because I kind of took notes on all of them, and it was like a lot to go through at a time, but, um.
Yeah, because the only thing that gives me, I mean, yes, you know, if you have rules without consequences, then they're, they're all aspirational, you know? And the procedural stuff isn't, because they're not, you follow that, but less of it. Um, I, my concern is that it somehow gets viewed that we're sort of weaponizing the rules, where, you know, I was thinking of a nice way to say this. We have, in my view, a council right now that is very divided. That doesn't always work that well together, and I wonder whether this is something that would just make that worse. So just let me think of that.
Yeah, I, I guess I look at it like, if we don't all come together on simple things, and, and it becomes bigger things, and maybe it won't. I don't think it would be good to pull something out of thin air either, if, if there's a sentiment where, where we don't come together and they're making things that need dealing with, I don't think it's good to pull that out of thin air, so.
I, I understand what you're saying, I guess all I'm suggesting is, yeah, we have not had anything like this in our roles up until now. For the most part, they seem, you know, we have more stuff that we're putting in now, so I get that. I'm just thinking in terms of the general atmosphere, um, the ability to work collegially with each other, and perhaps a feeling that may or may not be true, that there's like something going on here as public, part of the insertion of that one, or so.
All cheering in over it.
Yeah, just, yeah, it's just something for you guys to think about, you should also think about the fact that, um, just the, even if we did, you know, if we put it in, we put it in, if that's what you wanna do, we'll do that. If you don't put it in, you know, we could build in here something like the rules shall be reviewed. You know, I think there was something in, in what you sent, Kristen. Like, after each election, like every two years, you know, the rules shall be reviewed and be affirmed or adjusted or whatever, so it's not like if you don't include it, you'll never be able to. I, I'm just suggesting that it may do more damage than good, um, just in terms of the optics, but. And you let me know.
I'm not a fan of the optics, I think that we had, um, divided councils all along, and I, I embrace that, I, I think that we shouldn't be all those strangers, I think that there is some benefit to bringing people together who come at solutions in a different way. And, um, I kind of respect that we're, and, and embrace that we're all not like minded.
I, I, I think it's more than not being like minded, which, yeah, I think healthy disagreement is fine. From where I sit, it, it doesn't look like people helpfully disagreeing with each other.
Water Town's the only town that has sanction news.
I'm good for a continued, thank you.
Cindy, when something is sent to the council as a whole, it says you sent a, a letter or whatever, you send it out to the council as a whole. But if it refers to a matter that's come before the council, or the, like, whatever it happens to be, does that get committed to the public record referring to questions, uh?
All the public comments that are sent to the town council for anything that's on the agenda does get sent to the town clerk. She does not put it in the official, but it's on as an addendum. So in other words, if you want, since the public said, I wanna see the meeting minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah.
She'll pull the minutes, but then she'll also pull a second, um, for public comment. The, it's always sent to the clerk, and how she files it down there is, is an amendment to the main unit.
So it's a paper copy that's not digitally accepted?
The public comments are not put on digitally.
Yeah, so if some, so if somebody's mailing it, it's just, it's kept in the record at the town clerk level, and somebody could go to the town clerk and request to read.
For any public comment that came in for the November seventh meeting.
Yeah.
Because they're all forwarded to her.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could use your record by getting logs, and send you a ten page rec, ten page letter on the second, or second, or third, or the ninth side.
Yeah, she just does the minutes of what actually happens at the meeting. And she gives a synopsis if somebody comes to the podium to speak, but anything that I sent her electronically is just attached to the meeting minutes downstairs, it's not put on the web.
So do you want, um, is it a thing that Karen should work on, um, on these consequences for dealing with you?
I think that we should, I, and, and if we, the only other thing I would suggest is that we discuss that with that itself, so that maybe we have a full committee to make a decision on that, I think that would only be fair to include them in that conversation. Yeah, I, I think that would be best, I guess. And I mean, maybe, I don't know how much work it will be to bring forward what you think would be best set, so that you can, you know.
Yeah, so what I can do is I can make all the other changes that we talked about in here, and then I can just do a separate, a separate proposed rule. That you all can look at and say, you know, we like it, we don't like it, we word it, and then let's put that in the rules, or let's not put that in the rules.
Because in the end, it must be adopted by all fourteen members, so we can.
Where they can vote no, and be outvoted. So I think we're, we're done with one meeting, you know, it's a caveat of, you know.
I think so. I think it's in pretty good shape, and. Did you wanna talk about moving forward? Yeah, I said, oh, last talk. Yeah, probably.
I think we should just finish this up and send out the code, I mean, submit the rules and say, then, what do you think?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying.
I was gonna recommend, like, the committee might wanna take a hiatus.
Yeah, I do, but I do think that it'll show that we've accomplished something, put it in a hopper and get, and put it on your upcoming agendas, which look to be fairly white. December agendas, I think it would be.
I don't know what's on the December or something, December.
Well, I don't see any, any presentation coming out of this. Anyways, I, I do think, yeah. So, yeah, so if we can, um, look at another meeting date. Come up with a final, send it to, um, Seth and Betty.
You know, it always helps to go back to the documents, when we talk about meetings, regular meetings, for example, the town council will have two Thursdays per month. Except during July and August, and regular meetings will have one Thursday per month. I was always concerned about where a rule was set the first and the third Thursdays.
I think it's in the, in the town ordinance.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, this chapter, the chapter two twenty.
Yeah.
Section one, regular meetings. So, yeah, I, I could tell about that, where I was thinking we really shouldn't be, we should block the meetings in order. We really have under that town code, the charter code, you have the option to, month, Thursday.
Well, and also, um, so you're saying that the charter language is much more not free?
That's the code.
That's the straight code.
It's in the code, but.
Regular meetings of the town council shall be held at a time and place fixed by ordinance, that's why there's the ordinance, but which shall not be less frequent than once monthly.
And the ordinance reads what?
Should be two meetings, except during July and August, which is really important.
So are you saying, you think we should go back to the?
No, 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 all I was saying is, I, I, I.
No, I just didn't know.
I kind of was just thinking, you know, the, the rules say first and third, we should try and stick to the first and third, but there's nothing that says we can't move that, I was just.
Yes.
Kind of like where the meetings started.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know who was saying, we should have the rule match more closely the language of the ordinance, ordinance, which is a little wishy washy.
Well, I'm looking.
That's all, I mean, it's like, do we want the rule to match ordinance, so maybe we should use the ordinance language.
Yeah, so the ordinance says, regular meetings shall be held on two Thursdays per month. Except during July and August, going regularly, and shall be held on one Thursday per month. The dates shall be approved by a majority vote of the town council in December, each year for the following calendar year.
Well, I guess it eliminates the feeling that we're, we, because then we're kind of married to this idea that has to be the first and third, or somebody tells us. Versus, yeah, we gotta switch it, and we gotta switch to January, we gotta switch to February, we gotta switch to April, and the summer, I mean, it's kind of like.
Well, June switched too, we have to have back and back and turn, because Juneteenth, the new holiday falls on the Thursday, on the third Thursday.
It's like, maybe the language needs to be a little wishy washy, because in December we set the schedule, we have a provision in there for you to change it, but we don't marry it to the first and the third.
You know, maybe get away from that first and third language, to just go with the regular meetings of the municipal town council, which we have on two Thursdays per month, except during July, August, and regular meetings. Just go with that language in the illustrated code, one section one. Get away from the first and third.
That's a good solution. Okay, so you want to say, shall meet on two Thursdays each month?
No, just mimic the, the, the language in the code.
And then the phrase says, um, having to think that this is bound to rules to change a date. It's still compliant with it.
Well, if we have two weeks per month, then maybe we will.
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just, just to put that as an example, the reason for a regular meeting schedule, I think, is to have, right, some regular, there's some certainty, and it's like, oh, like, you know, look at my phone, the next year I start plugging it in first and third Thursdays.
How about if we state the ordinance reads blah, blah, blah? The town council will make every effort to make it the first and third, blah, blah, blah.
I think that's what it says.
I don't.
First of all, in December, we're gonna come up with a schedule for the next year, so, to, to, to address current issues in December, uh,
You'll have a schedule for next year.
In December, the following calendar year, so you've got the meetings. And the other issue is that there, there's a phrase that says, no, town committee shall meet, uh, the town council meeting, that it's on the first and third, a lot of the schedule, there needs second and fourth.
They won't know when to schedule, they won't know when to schedule the three willy nilly that went to the Thursdays.
Well, but you're giving it a calendar year of dates.
Correct.
Right. So you're getting away from the Jewish holidays or the.
So to, to Kristen's point, we. So to, to Kristen's point, we can use the chapter two twenty language and then add every effort that we made.
Yeah, I guess it's insane, it's like.
Or just to have some.
Yeah, like, we're not being inflammatory by switching the meetings. Like, it's actually an ability, you know, it says two Thursdays, we're gonna try to make it the first and the third. Recognize those circumstances that come up. So this basically means it's any Thursday, whatever the heck we want.
I guess I was just coming up on the first.
It's good to have that rigidity though, so people can plant their legs outside of this first and third Thursday. But then we.
All right, next meeting, yeah, any other considerations for Karen and Ellen, how's it feel? Regarding the body of the work.
You wanted to skip the Sunday?
No, I was thinking not, I, I think you can close this up.
Oh, for closing it off, okay, I thought.
No, yeah, just.
Yeah, we're gonna have a thumb of the pussy here.
So let's, if, if it's not too intrusive for you guys, can we get over in the day, cause perhaps that's what Seth doesn't do. I'm guessing.
What do you? Oh, no.
Is it possible to have a meeting before the twelfth, and maybe we can get on the council meeting on the twelfth?
To get it on the agenda, you have to be ready.
Probably before.
Okay.
By the second.
Yeah, okay.
Could we?
I have to pop on Zoom again for my business.
Okay.
Sure.
Your updates, but, um, sorry.
Sorry for the wrong point.
I know Chris is gonna hate this, but is there any way we could do it? That's my say, at the end of the month after this. December's a tough month.
I was just saying, nothing is.
Could we do it by Zoom?
I think we could do it by Zoom, but I, I don't have a proper meeting between Christmas and meetings, with you.
Zomlin's meeting on the two Fridays, we have to stay away from Fridays, cause there's.
Yeah, you wanna do like on, like Monday, the sixteenth, by Zoom, sure. December.
There's a CPC meeting at high thirty on the sixteenth, here, but.
December sixteenth, is that what you said?
What time, four?
How about you do it?
Whatever you guys wanna do.
Let's go with four. I'll see if we can get Seth, let me come get Seth and Betty and see if they can make it. Or we can say we're looking at a final draft on that day. You can't make it, we can do that, you're okay with that plan? If Seth or Betty can't make it that day, say we're looking for a final.
Whatever, whatever.
Sixteenth at four.
Yeah, I think if we could do it by Zoom, then that works great.
Uh, do you wanna push, push off the, um, acceptance of the minutes for the next meeting?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Uh, there are two meetings, this is.
Two meetings.
Where are they, um, um.
Twenty nine.
There's an August in, um.
October twenty nine?
And what is today?
No, you're, you're talking about the nothing on the webpage. I asked Webpress again to, but I CC you, they know, so you know what was.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of October twenty ninth as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Cindy, is it okay if I, if I just want a little room?